Welcome, everybody, to November 19th Drake Meeting, Board of Selectmen and Board of Health. It's Thursday, November 19th, 6:30. In attendance is Jean Canty, Josh Antrim, Mark Coverman, and Administrator Antonio Barletta. So, let's get started. The first thing we have on our agenda is an update from Deb Murphy and John Coolen on our COVID-19 status. I know that there's been a lot going on over the past week, a couple of weeks since we last met, and I'm interested in hearing what Deb and John and Tony have to say, and some of the steps we made in town to get people tested, and whatever, and some issues that we've had at our meeting. So, Tony, I'll turn it over to you, and you can turn it over to Deb and John.
Sure. So, I'll let Deb get through the staff and categories that the town's been labeled as by the state, based on how many cases we had. But we have had, we are happy to announce that Swambscott testing free, no appointment, testing is now six days a week. And we also have testing available. Here, let me read the days. Swambscott's open at the First Congressional Church, Monday through Friday, from 2:30 p.m. to 6:30 p.m., and then on Saturdays, 8 a.m. to 12 p.m. And then we are, we've expanded that to Nahat as well, the St. Thomas Aquinas Church parking lot. Next week, because of the holiday, it's Tuesday, Wednesday, 11 to 1. But after that, will be Wednesdays and Fridays, 11 to 1. And then as far as with, you know, with the Town Hall, we're back open. We're still going to be Monday, Wednesday, Friday to the public. You know, as we published earlier this week, you know, we feel that as far as transmission within the building itself, we're not, we feel we're, we got a good control of that, the protections in place that we have, doing a good job of preventing that sort of thing. And we had two positive cases of staff in the building. You know, they weren't related to each other. We believe that it was transmitted outside of the building. And then, of course, you know, close contacts of those people are required to quarantine as well. So, you know, one thing that we're definitely getting a better handle on here is when someone tests positive, you know, the quarantine requirements for the close contact. So even if, you know, based on the state regs, and I'll let Deb get further into it, but, you know, based on the state regs, even if you have a mask on, if you are within a certain amount of feet of a positive contact for a certain amount of time, you are required, you're considered a close contact, you're required to quarantine. And even if you get a negative test, you're still required to quarantine for a certain amount of time until you get a second negative. So I'll let Deb get into those details, but, you know, I think that, you know, for us, obviously, you know, when a, if a certain department, if one person in a certain department that shares an office with another tests positive, and the close contact is the other person in that department, and they have to shut down for 10 days or 14 days, it cripples, you know, our progress, our efficiency in the Town Hall. So, we're taking a closer look at, you know, separation of space in the building for our staff, overlapping schedules, you know, trying to figure out how can we, you know, best avoid a potential, you know, individual department shutdown for extended periods of time, while also still being able to, you know, get things done, and, you know, that there is access to those departments to the, for the public too. So, we're, you know, we're looking into that. We also, you know, we already looked into today, you know, some, some newer, updated Plexiglas and protocols within the building for staff. So, you know, we're, I, I think until you really, until you go through it in your professional setting, or in a school setting, or in a family, you know, until you really go through it and experience it, it's, it's hard to kind of predict how it will impact, impact the Town Hall. So now that we've gone through it, and everyone's feeling well and, and doing well, obviously, that's our number one concern is the employees' health, safety, and then, of course, the residents as well coming into the building. So, so we're, we're back, we were back today, you know, part, some of us, most of us. And if anybody needs, you know, if anybody's having trouble getting in touch with the, with folks in the Town Hall, just, you know, call the main number. The Board of Selectmen's office is, is up and running, and, you know, we're all, we all can work remotely too. So email is great.
Hey, Tony, just a big, a big thanks for pulling the testing together. That's going to be a big benefit for everybody in town. I know it requires some shagging and jibing, but that was great.
I think all testing facilities have seen a major uptick in the past couple of weeks with numbers on the rise and with the holiday around the corner, which I think is great. You know, especially if, if folks, even if you're, even if you're, you know, staying home with your own household, or you're staying under the 10-person limit, you know, getting a test this weekend so you get results before the holiday is a great idea. And so, you know, hopefully, I, I, I know on my way home, I drove by the Swambscott site, and the, the line of cars was down the road. So it's definitely, definitely picking up.
Thank you.
Deb?
Okay, so, I just want to start by saying that we're, we're in our, we're getting into a grave situation here in town. When I printed the numbers out for tonight's meeting, I just printed the numbers from November 1st to November 9th, until tonight, and we've had 19 new cases. When I look at the numbers, on October 14th, we only had 49 cases. And now, on November 19th, we have 87 cases. Our average this week for percent positivity that just came out tonight puts us at 3.88%, when the state's average is 3.22%. So, we have flipped from the green to the yellow. We've had many people, 464 people tested in the last two weeks, and this data that was collected from 11/1 to 11/14 shows that we had 18 positive cases. So when you have 18 positive cases, then you have all the contacts, all the contacts of those people. Some people have six, eight close contacts. People, you know, people go to a lot of different places, and when you do the contact tracing, and a lot of those places are out of town, a couple of these recent ones were out of state. So that means we have to, I have to contact these other local communities, the other states, speak with the state a lot, our DPH, create clusters for the town, which have created a couple. So it's getting, our numbers, as everybody knows, are rising. There's hardly a day now that I log on that I don't have a new case. Sometimes, you know, more than one cases. The good, the good news out of all of this, if there's any good news to be taken, is the school is doing great. And I would just like to dispel any of those rumors that were circulating that the kids were transmitting the virus in the school. That did not and is not happening. The kids in school that tested positive, the couple that we had, they were exposed to an adult. They were not exposed to anybody in school. And so, I think, you know, my main goal is, of course, like Tony said, to keep, keep the town safe, but to keep our school open too. I think that's really so important for everybody. Going forward, I think our problem areas right now are inside. We knew that was going to happen because it got cold out, and, you know, there's less and less happening outside. Inside, I think people don't tend to wear their masks as much, and I don't think they pay attention a lot to the number of people gathering. Those two scenarios together makes it a bad situation. And I've seen, and we've all seen, how fast this virus can spread from one person to another in that situation. So we'll just continue to, you know, to monitor the, the numbers. I'm, I'm happy that we're having the testing two days a week. I see the Swambscott lines every day. I know people tell me they've waited two hours in those lines. We only have a two-hour window in Nahat, and I, I would expect that those lines on both of those days we have next week, I, I would expect a full capacity. The good thing about this group that's doing our testing, which is the same people that are doing it in Swambscott, they have a very quick turnaround time. The important thing to remember, and I heard this today too, on one of my DPH meetings, the test is great. The test, you get tested today, and it says you are negative today. If you get the test, and then tomorrow, go to a party or a gathering in someone's house, that you could negate your negative test. So if you are testing before Thanksgiving, you should, you know, get the test, get your results, and then you should plan on really quarantining until Thanksgiving, meaning, you know, don't, don't go to the grocery store, don't go here or there. That is really difficult, I think, for people. But, but the test will give you, you know, right now, I'm negative, that type of a, and you should try to stay negative after you get your test.
Hey, Deb, I, I sat in that line in Swambscott for just over an hour, and I wound up going past the, the cutoff time. But they kept taking people as long as they were in line, and then they put a block down at the far end. Will we allow people that are in line at the right time, but if, if in fact, we get a, a big line of testing, will we be able to keep them all coming in?
I think, and Tony, you probably know this, but I, I think they're going to be doing Nahat 11 to 1, but then they're going to have to be ready in Swambscott at 2:30, right? Because that's
Right. Oh, okay. So they'll have to, they'll, they'll do as much as they can with, you know, but they have to give themselves enough time to wrap up and get over to Swambscott and open up.
Right.
Okay, yeah.
And I'm not sure at what point they have to, you know, drop off the specimens too, that they've collected from the Nahat people. I don't know if they have a courier, I'm not sure what that, how they, you know, how they do that, but.
We, we will, we will aim to put some type of traffic plan description on the website and on Facebook before Tuesday. But I know, you know, our preliminary conversations with Chief, Chief Dwyer, Chief Palumbo were to have folks lined up on the hot road on the same side as the church, pull in to the parking lot like you typically do and exit like you typically do.
Deb, is this a self-swab type thing?
I don't think so, no, no.
When you go to the site, do they give you a, a swab to swab yourself?
No.
Or they swab you?
They swab you.
You stay in the car?
You stay in the car. You have to fill out, you know, your informational sheet so they can contact you with your results. They will either text you or email you. Of course, I get all the positives, and from this site, I usually get the negatives. So that
For those, for those folks that, that are listening, that might be a fear to this testing. There's two types of testing I've been through. One is where they take that swab and put it almost through the back of your head. And then there's one where they just twirl it around in your nostril, and that's the one that we're doing in Nahat, Swambscott. You never even feel it.
Just as an alternative, I've been, I've, my second time I went to, I, I signed on to the Beacon Commonwealth, and I've gone to the Revere site, but it's top and shop there. Thing is, you do have to go online, you have to sign up. I went on, on Monday, they scheduled me for Wednesday at 9:30. I got there at 9:20, a little early, and I was out of there by 9:25. Very efficient. So it's another alternative that people should look into.
And I think Tony sent out the website last week too. You can put in your zip code, it's the testing website, and it will show you all the sites, you know, in, in a 10-mile radius that are doing the testing. And it also, Mark, will tell you if you do need to register first, or if you can just drive in. Yeah.
Again, thank you so much, Deb. I know that you, I can't imagine, you, you deserve a huge vacation after all of this. I mean,
I don't know if I can wait that long.
I know. Well, the vaccines are on the corner, hopefully, and
Not fast enough.
Not fast enough, but, yeah, the town is in such debt to you. I mean, thank you so much for all you've done. You've been tremendous.
Yeah, like, ditto. You know, for what Deb was saying there, she's making 30 to 50 calls a day, nonstop.
Yeah.
Wellness checks and
Those are just the outgoing calls?
Just the outgoing calls, right. And then, you know, and, I know from talking to Deb, you know, she'll get incoming calls from people who are, you know, close contact of a close contact of a close contact. And I know it's a scary situation, but, you know, as far as the contact tracing goes, it's, it sticks to the close contact of the positive test, not the next close contact. So, you know, if you had to go to that next branch, Deb, you'd need a, you need a staff of 12. Deb, before, before jumping over to John, could you talk a little bit too, just about, you know, the, the symptoms and the, not any specifics, because I know, you know, we're dealing with protected HIPAA laws here, and you can't get into personal medical records of individuals, but overall, like, you know, how long people are experiencing symptoms, and has that changed over time, and that sort of thing?
So, you know, a lot of people will say, how, how do I know if it's a cold or COVID? Because so many of the symptoms overlap. COVID has a couple of symptoms that are specific to COVID. One of them is the loss of taste and smell. That, that symptom pretty much, I'd say, 85% of the people will, will get that. What I've been seeing over the last two weeks, though, is an increase in people who think they have sinus infections, nasal congestion, severe headaches. That has been, I think, the number one system for the last couple of weeks. Everybody will say, you know, the fever will abate, but the headache will, seems to linger. I do have, I still have a couple of people on caseload from October that are, they're going into their fourth week now with this, that just can't, they just can't shake it. They can't, they can't go back to work, they can't, you know, it's, it's, it's tough. Most people, you know, the minimum for isolation for a positive case is 10 days. Most people probably can, can hit that, that number of days. You have to have 24 hours with no symptoms on your 10th day, by your 10th day, in order to be released, so to speak. Some people have had to stay on for the full two weeks just to shake those lingering symptoms. And then, the other part of it that we don't hear too much about is after people have recovered, some people turn into what they term lawn haulers, and they have symptoms. You know, they'll recover, they'll be okay for a couple of weeks, but then they have symptoms that will come back. And the study on these type of people is that some people now, because this virus hasn't really been around even a year yet, they don't know how many people are going to have this term lawn haulers. And they're not, and, you know, the, the age group that we're seeing right now, it's not the old people, you know, it's not the 70 and 80-year-olds, like when we had the nursing home, you know, problems. It's all, it's mostly people in their 30s and 40s. And the average age for the state right now is 38. So I think that's interesting that we're kind of following.
Oh, Deb, in the case of, so the 10-day is the minimum quarantine period?
That's for isolation.
Isolation. So, in the case of people that still have symptoms after four weeks, or are they still contagious, or?
So, if they, if they still have a cough, you know, the cough, the respiratory symptoms are the ones that are the most troublesome. So, what I have, tomorrow, I have a couple of people that are going to be retested now after this long period. The problem with retesting is you can test positive for three to four months after, without really being contagious. It's just that you're still shedding the virus, so that, that would really be false positive. So, anybody that I have that I've, you know, released, that some people want to retest, you know, just to see, but they all come back positive because, because it's, it's too close to the period of the active infection. So, so yes, I, I would say the people with, you know, with the, with the cough and the symptoms, the respiratory symptoms, I wouldn't want to put them out near, you know, near, we obviously can't go back to work, or go back to school, you know, if they're working in a school environment. So, I mean, that's not a lot of people, but I think it's interesting that it's been a few people.
Deb, I also understand that some other symptoms may include gastrointestinal type of issues, without, without any respiratory.
Sometimes, but most people that will admit to having any GI symptoms will usually have another symptom to go with it, whether it's the fever, the loss of taste or smell, you know, the dry cough.
All right, great. Thank you, Deb, again. John?
Sure. I've been conducting annual fall inspections at our food establishments, as well as the fire captain and building inspector. And this has turned into an opportunity for discussion about COVID-19 matters, updates on mandates and, and protocols. And in some, some circumstances, we are looking beyond distancing and barriers, and we're looking at the efficiency of air handling systems, particularly in situations where it may be suspect, and especially might need to be operating very efficiently and cleanly. So, I, I like it that in some circumstances, with a, these kinds of opportunities, we are achieving improvements and not just holding our own. People are responding, I think, very well, and we will just continue, continue on. People do ask questions about our infection rate, and I refer them to Deb. And otherwise, I'm glad that we were able to reopen Town Hall. Certainly, as Tony mentioned earlier, the, it's, it's taken for granted that Town Hall is always there, and Town Hall employees will serve the town, et cetera. And this served to bring home how much we at Town Hall are at the mercy of this, this virus as much as any other business. Any questions?
Yeah, just, John, just one question. At, at the outlets or the institutions that you're visiting and inspecting, do they have any kind of a guideline posted as you enter?
Not necessarily as you enter. Depends on the type of establishment it might be. Is it a straight function facility? If so, how do they have their websites set up and their, their menus and, and that kind of a thing? Is it a, is it a restaurant? Well, are there, is there sufficient signage? If not, we look to, to, to make sure that we have that.
Right.
Okay, so it's going to depend on, on what type of place it is. We have, I think it's 17 permits in town, and everyone is the same, and everyone is different. You know, it's that kind of, that kind of thing.
I'll add into that, you know, when this whole, when this pandemic first started, we quickly realized that we didn't, you know, we don't have a Chamber of Commerce in Nahat, but we do have a number of businesses that are open to the public. And so we, you know, kind of created a, a group email and regularly scheduled meetings. And I'll say that, you know, we've, and we've restarted those as the numbers have started to climb again. And I'll just say that, you know, the local business owners in town are on top of it. They, they usually, you know, John and I will go on for a few minutes about the new reg that just came out, and then they're kind of coming back with, hey, this is how we're doing it. This is, we talked to other towns, other restaurants, or bars, or function halls in other communities. This is how they're doing it. This is something we could do. You know, a number of stores have actually, you know, when we, when the limit was five, they were making it 10, as far as how many people could be in the store. So, I, you know, I, I will say that, you know, our, our business owners and managers are fully aware of this. They care about the residents' health, and they know that, you know, as our community numbers increase, we run the risk of potentially reversing in the reopening phase, and then, which could lead to, you know, a, a shut, a shutdown of some sort, or more restrictions. So, they are, they're definitely ahead of the game. And then plus, John's doing, you know, stop-ins at, at all, at all the local establishments too, so.
Thank you, Tony. And, and John, again, I want to thank you too. I mean, you've, you must have been serving as our Public Health Officer now for close to 20 years.
21.
21 years. You know, over those years, you've developed the institutional knowledge of this town. You've developed relationships with the business owners and their managers. They trust you. They believe in you. They listen to you. So we're lucky to have you, and thank you for all your work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Now, we get some other, we go from COVID to, Tony, we all sat in the COVID issues now?
Yeah. Yeah, I think so too. I think, you know, I just, I would just finish it off with, you know, reminding people that it is a extremely difficult thing to track, and a, and a very difficult thing to, you know, many people are asymptomatic. They, you know, there are folks that aren't. So, you know, you just got to be taking the right steps to protect yourself regardless of whether you get a call about a close contact, or whether you were, you know, at a party, or, you know, in your house. You never know, so
Okay, we're going to go to opening comments, and I do have some bittersweet news here I have to share with everyone. We recently, and I see that she's joined us on Zoom tonight, we recently got a letter from our esteemed town accountant, Deb Waters, who's decided to retire after twenty-six years on the job. And I say bittersweet because the town will be struggling to try to fill your shoes, in fact, we never will fill your shoes, Deb. You know, for all the time I served as, as town administrator, you know, any success I had as town administrator was directly attributed to you, and you sort of, you remind me of, I was sort of like the Wizard of Oz, who's that guy behind the curtain, but you are really the Wizard of Oz in the heart, because everything that happens is behind the curtains in your back office. The reason we get through every year and budgets and free cash and all of that stuff is, is because of you and your hard work, the hours that you put in over the years. You know, we will miss you. You, not only, not only you are, not only are you one of my best friends, you're one of the best, if not the best, town accountant we've ever had, and one of the best public servants we've ever had. So, Deb, thank you very much, and I'll miss you, but I won't, I'll be seeing a lot of you. I think you're muted, Deb.
I was. Thank you so much. Wow, what an honor for you to say that, all of that, Mark. Thank you. I really enjoyed working with you and so many others, and I wish Tony the best with all he has in front of him, and time for the younger people to come in and do it, I guess, but it was fun, and it's been fun, and I enjoyed everybody, and I appreciate all of you, and I know I will miss everybody too, but I'll get involved somehow, some way, down the road.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to also, you know, thank you, Deb, publicly, I know I've said it to you a million times, but, you know, I would not be, I would not nearly have as much success either, same as Mark said, if it wasn't for you. I've learned everything from you, and it's going to be, it's going to be really hard without having you there, and you've served every town administrator, and you know, you know the details, the backstories, the who knows what, you know, you have every, you go far beyond just the accountant. You know, even if it's just a difficult day and you need a minute to just like, you know, talk something out, you're there for me. So really, really appreciate everything you've done, and you deserve retirement more than, more than anyone in the building. So I really thank you a lot for everything you've done.
Thank you so much. It's too much. You guys are great. Thank you for all you've done, all of you. Keep it going. You have a lot of work ahead of you.
Yeah. Thank you, Debbie.
Thank you, Josh.
I'll be giving you a call, we'll get together, Deb.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, guys. Good luck.
Thanks, Deb. So Deb will be, Deb's, Deb's going to be with us for a couple more months now, or a month or so, month and a half or so, but we're going to try to, you know, extract as much knowledge from her before she goes as possible, and we'll be posting the position soon, so hopefully we get somebody with, with some background in municipal accounting that can spend some time with Deb and learn, and learn the, you know, every municipality is a little bit different, so it's always good to have some overlap, especially in that position. So we'll be posting that probably tomorrow.
Great, Tony, thanks. I know you'll struggle, you know, you lose Bobby Joe, now you lose Deb, it's, you got COVID, when it rains, it pours, right? But you'll get through it, you know, like I told you the other day, it can only get better.
Yeah, you know, people have been saying that every day since I started. No, it's, it's an awesome place to work. You know, I know Deb's not going to leave us high and dry, she'll, she'll help us out. She loves the town very, very much, and wants to see me succeed and our team succeed, so we'll, we'll get through it, we'll get through it.
I think Deb Murphy has something to say, she keeps raising the figure. No, you're all set, okay.
Hold on, Deb, I tried to unmute now.
There you go. All of those accolades are so well-deserved for Deb, because she's, she's even helped me so much, oh, there she is, she's back again, with all my, all the blue vaccine work, you know, all the paperwork, the invoices, you can always run into that office, and she never says, I'm too busy for you. And, you know, when you're working with people like that, it's just wonderful to have people like that to work with. But the other part of Deb is, not only is she great at her work, she's a wonderful person, and she's so empathetic and compassionate, and she does so much for people that a lot of people don't even know about. So I just think, I just hope, Deb, you have the best retirement. I tried it once, it didn't work. Just be careful if you answer the phone.
Yeah, she's going to block my number.
Oh, she's still muted.
Oh, Deb, we can't hear you.
Oh, sorry. Thank you so much, Deb. That was quite, that was very, very nice. I feel the same way right back at you, and all you've been doing with all this COVID, and it's a lot, and I know you tried to retire, so you will, you will, we'll get you there. We'll be going to the beach together soon, till you're going down the street. Thank you all very, very much. I feel sad in a way because I won't be seeing everybody as much, but it's, it's a good feeling, and I will help, Tony. You can call me. Thank you, guys.
You all heard it.
Yeah, thanks, Deb.
Get that in the minutes.
Okay, we have some other opening comments here. Winter parking ban goes into effect December twenty-third through March twentieth, between the hours of twelve AM and six AM. Tony, we still have the request for on-street parking that goes through the police department?
Yes, if you don't have off-street parking, you can get a winter permit. It's, the application for that is on the police department's website, so you don't, you can call, but you can actually apply right through, right online.
Oh, great. That's great. I know some parts of town really need that, and it works out pretty well, and the chief does a good job with that. Okay, the Hot Lions Club turkey shoot this Saturday, November twenty-first, at the DPW is, will be held between ten AM.
It's actually canceled.
Oh, it's canceled? Okay.
It would not be, will not be held. Will not be held.
Oh, it doesn't say that on the agenda?
No.
Maybe.
I think it was late-breaking news.
I think it was within the last twenty-four or so hours.
They probably, they probably figured out I was coming, and they, no, we're kidding. Okay. Last leaf pickup on Monday, November twenty-third. This is, leave your leaves in a bag out in front of your house, and DPW will pick that up and bring it down to the compost area. You can bring them down to the compost area yourselves on Wednesdays and Saturdays all day. Okay, then you, let's see, Community Preservation Committee funding update. Tony, we got some great news on this from the, from the state, so why don't you walk us through this?
Okay, so the state, statewide, the CPC, Community Preservation Act, mostly due to legislative changes that provided additional funding sources for the CPA, has, you know, has experienced increases in that fund, which then trickles down to the municipalities, and they see a higher map from the state. So in, you know, in FY, in fiscal year eighteen, the town in Nahat saw a match of, you know, eighty thousand dollars. In fiscal year nineteen, we saw a match of a hundred and four thousand dollars, and the estimated amount in FY, no, in FY twenty, we saw a hundred and thirty-six thousand, and the estimated amount for this upcoming year, FY twenty-one, is a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. So we, you know, we were nervous there with COVID and, you know, revenues being impacted by, by the pandemic, but this is great, great news. So, you know, with last year's town meeting, or this, this most recent town meeting in September, we didn't take up the CPC grant, and so ten percent of those proceeds go into three separate categories: housing, open space, and recreation, and historical preservation. And then the balance of that goes, stays in the revenues, stays in a reserve fund. So that will just, essentially, that's going to roll forward into next year, where we'll have a, you know, two years' worth of funding to allocate. So a lot of work for CPC, for the committee, but all good news.
So that's about a seventy percent return.
Yeah, sixty-nine point five percent match. That's unbelievable.
Yeah.
That's great. You know, and I know that communities that have, that have chosen the three percent surcharge, as Nahat did, receives a lot more than communities that didn't do that.
So that's, um, there's been, I think, there's been some confusion, or seen some, I've seen some threads on Facebook and so on, particularly earlier this year, confusion about CPA funds and CPC, and, and so I want to take just a minute to spread some information, if I could. I wrote some notes for myself, so excuse me for looking like I'm reading, because I'm reading. So CPA funds can be used for open space, recreation, historic preservation, and public housing. The Community Preservation Act, which was signed into law in the year two thousand, was formed to help fund these, these, these four categories. And any organization in town, or any person in town, can apply for CPA projects that meet these criteria. Nahat CPC, Community Preservation Committee, will evaluate these applications and makes recommendations to the voters of Nahat, so puts their recommended projects on the town warrant. At annual town meeting, each application is voted on separately, so it's not a, it's not a bundled thing. Every, everyone is voted on separately. So importantly, it's the voters that decide what projects get funded. I, I consider these, funding these things, open space, recreation, historic preservation, as quality of life issues, and money spent on these things is an investment in the future of our community. I believe there's value to open space and recreation, historic preservation, public housing. So in essence, the CPA says if a community sees the value in open spaces and all those categories, and votes to participate in the CPA, the commonwealth messages will defray the cost of doing so. Nahat voted to join CPA in two thousand and four, and it's funded with a three percent surcharge on our real estate tax bill over the first hundred thousand dollars. The state match varies from year to year, but I think over the past fifteen years that we've been involved, it's been, I think it's averaged over fifty percent. I have to check my numbers, and this year, sixty-nine and a half percent is really fantastic. Some past projects included restoration of the library, Town Hall, Police Station, the wharf, the ramp at the wharf. Applications for FY twenty twenty-one include fixing the leaking windows in the low-income housing, Nahat Historical Society archival conservation and preservation, new kitchen in the Council on Aging, Bailey's Hill and Fort Ruckman East Slope restoration, Nahat Little League Playground, excuse me, Little Nahat Playground repairs, Lowlands Men's softball fields, Spring Road basketball courts, and access to Town Hall for people with disabilities. So many important projects that enhance the quality and sense of community in our town, so I believe that CPA has been and continues to be a huge boon for Nahat. So, and if you have questions about how it all works, you know, contact someone on the CPC and ask questions, or reach out to Tony at Town Hall, but, you know, if you're sincerely interested in knowing the answers, those are the places to go, so just wanted to share that information.
Thanks, Josh, thanks for that summary. I couldn't agree with you more. You know, all of those projects that you mentioned, without the Community Preservation Funds, one of two things would have happened, either we wouldn't have done those projects, or we would have funded those projects through our general fund. With the Community Preservation Act, we, we now have the state this year funding projects like that at seventy percent, so the town is only paying thirty percent. You know, it's been, it's been a great advantage for this town over the past, you know, sixteen or so years, and I'm glad we adopted it back in two thousand and four, and I look forward to supporting it as we move forward.
Yeah, just adding to what you just said, so the, that, that CPA money is, is separate from the general budget, and that's intentional, and the intent is to protect, to protect these quality of life items from the annual vacancies of our, of our general budget item. So, you know, we're not tempted to skip the library repairs because, you know, of issues in our general fund, so I think it's a, I think it's a wise choice to keep these separate, because it allows things to happen that, you know, as you said, either would have cost fifty percent more, or don't get done, so.
Hey, Josh, thanks, thanks, thanks for taking the time to go through that, because most people out there don't realize or understand what that three percent is doing for them.
Yeah, it's doing four and a half percent is what it's doing for them. Yeah, so, I mean, you know, sometimes people get tempted to, you know, oh, I can cut my real estate tax by three and a half percent, but you probably really wind up raising it by four and a half percent. Anyway, that's all I have.
Appreciate that. Okay, we want a new business. We have some minutes to approve for November fifth.
Yep. A move that we approved the minutes from November fifth, two thousand and twenty.
Motion's been made?
Seconded.
Motion's been seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing, hearing none? All in favor?
Josh, I have my.
King Candy, aye.
Mark, come on and aye. Okay, some surplus equipment that I can buy again here, let's see. We need to declare Nahat Police Department, two thousand and four Chevy Tahoe SUV as surplus equipment.
Is that a motion? Or am I to read the motion?
Yeah, I'm trying to find the motion.
Police Department's, I'm sorry, twenty, two thousand and seven Chevy Tahoe SUV as surplus equipment.
Motion's been seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing, hearing none? All those in favor?
Josh, I have my.
King Candy, aye.
Mark, come on and aye. Let's see. One second. Get my, see? Okay, this is from the American Legion Post two fifteen, for the Patriotic Observance for Veterans Day, for Veterans Day on July fifteenth through the eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, we have the event request to approve here. So, I have a motion on that, maybe we have a discussion.
I'll make, I'll make the motion to approve the event request from the American Legion Post two fifteen, for the Patriotic Observance for Veterans Day on, for Veterans
We have the event request to approve here. Um so um I have a motion on that. Maybe we have a discussion.
I'll make I'll make the the motion to approve the event request from the American Legion Post two fifteen for the Patriotic Observance for Veterans Day on for veterans on July fifteenth through the eighteen, two thousand and twenty-one.
Seconded.
And seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Tony, you want to talk about this? Oh, is Toby with us?
Uh I don't see Toby on the
Okay.
For my this year, folks, but um uh this is the, an event that came came to the Board of Selectmen last year and unfortunately was postponed because of COVID. And uh we hope to do it this summer, but um you know, and we'll 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 have to, obviously, that'll be dependent on um dependent on COVID once again. So, you know, as we get closer, you know, through the spring, we'll be able to provide more details and a little bit more information about um you know, if if we're going to be able to pursue this event, but um.
Okay, well, that's
I know it's something that the the Legion's been working on really hard.
Hopefully, we can get it done this year. Um the only thing I want to add, and a little unrelated to this, is uh I was able to attend the uh Veterans Day services um uh last week, and I just want to say what a great job that the American Legion did um with their commander, Bob Fields, and everybody involved. Um it was really moving. And um we had a great day for it. The weather was beautiful. We had great attendance, and it was just a special day. So thanks to Commander Fields and um all the members of um Post two fifteen for their participation. It was a great day.
I'll agree with Mark. I attended as well, and and they did, Mark. They did a great job with that. Really well planned.
Great. Okay, so uh we have um we have a uh motion on the on the floor. All those in favor?
Jean Catty, aye.
Josh Antrim, aye.
Mark Cohen, an aye. Okay, uh we have an appointment um to the Open Space and Recreation Committee. This is a vacancy that was created uh a few months ago. And so it's typically done by um the town moderator. But when there's a vacancy to be filled, it's a combination between the town moderator and the board.
Actually, this one, Mr. Chairman, sorry to interrupt you. Actually, this one, this is actually, this is a joint appointment.
Yeah.
Um this, this isn't like the uh previous um elections we've done for planning board or assessor, uh Board of Assessors. This is actually a committee appointment. This is a joint appointment.
Between the moderator and the board?
Between the moderator and the Board of Selectmen. So um this seat was previously uh filled by Dana Sheehan. And he uh joined the Advisory and Finance Committee, so he can no longer hold this position. Um the Open Space and Recreation Plan Committee was um um how do I say? It was uh reconstituted um back in twenty fourteen, the town meeting of twenty fourteen, um where it says uh Article twenty-nine was continued committees, and in there it said, and to and to reconstitute the Open Space Management and Land Acquisition Committee as the Open Space and Recreation Plan Committee with five members jointly appointed to one-year terms by the moderator and the Board of Selectmen.
Okay, okay.
So we, I I can just give you some background before you get into the motion. Um we posted this on the uh town website and Facebook and announced it at our last Board of Selectmen meeting. Uh we've uh that we were looking for um interested participants, volunteers. Um we received four interested candidates, Rebecca Durgan, Michael Koller, Phil Russell, and Terry Motley. Um all four candidates um would be excellent um at the position and would be um I'm sure welcomed by the other committee members. Um the chairwoman of the committee uh has recommended Rebecca Durgan. And likewise, the town moderator has also uh sent over an email um recommending Rebecca Durgan to fill the seat of Dana Sheehan as well.
Yeah, this is um, I think this is the fourth appointment, third or fourth appointment we've had this fall where we've had more volunteers than positions, and it's um you know, we're really fortunate that people are willing to step up and do that. But um as I mentioned to Tony earlier today, it's it's um tough to uh be ha- have be forced to choose only one. So um we appreciate all four volunteers, that's for sure.
I would agree.
Many of them are, you know, many of them are are repeat volunteers. Uh they've committed, you know, a lot of time onto other committees as well. So they're all great candidates.
You know, as we approach um uh the coming year, Tony, with vacancies, uh like you said, some of these are repeat volunteers. They're very well qualified. Um I hope that you reach out to them. Um I hope we can find a a good position for them uh that they're willing to take. Um and um we have a lot of, a lot of vacancies to fill over the next couple of years, over the next year or so. So I'm sure we can find some work for them somewhere, uh who's willing to do it. Okay, I have a mo-
Okay, um based part on the recommendations from the chair of the Open Space and um the town moderator, I move to appoint Rebecca Pillsbury to the Open Space and Recreation Plan Committee.
Seconded. I'm gonna amend that. Um I think her married name is Durgan.
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry. Did I say Pillsbury?
Yeah, you did.
Sorry. Uh I'll repeat that. I remove, I remove to appoint Rebecca Durgan to the Open Space and Recreation Plan Committee.
Motion's been made. I have a second.
Seconded.
Motion's been seconded. All those in favor?
Josh Antrim, aye.
Jean Catty, aye.
Mark Cohen, an aye. Again, thank you, everybody, for for um willing to serve. All right, um ongoing business. We have preserving each point on our agenda each year. I have two points I want to bring up, Tony. One is uh I heard, we heard from our consultant who is doing the financial impact analysis. He's, they're finishing up their report. And hopefully, within a week or so, we'll have that available um for the public to review. Um I haven't seen it yet. Um but as soon as it's um finished, um I'd like to try to get it out and have people review it. And secondly, uh I think that, Josh, you brought up at our last meeting that it would be, it would be good if we had our eminent domain attorney um uh join us in a town-wide Zoom meeting to explain the process of eminent domain in the event that town chooses or the board chooses to go ahead uh with recommending that to the town. I think it would be a good opportunity uh for the townspeople who don't know what this process is and what it means, how it may affect the town, um to get their questions answered um by probably one of the most renowned eminent domain attorneys, not only in the Commonwealth, but maybe in the country, um to answer their questions. So Tony, I would like to try to um schedule that as soon as we can, probably after the first year. I know we have the holidays coming up, but after the first year, perhaps we could um, we could schedule that. Josh or Jean, I don't know if you have anything else to say on this?
Um I just, just that um when we plan to have of this presentation and question and answers, answer session, uh we'll have to advertise it, you know, as widely as possible. It's it's really, it'll really be a good opportunity for people to um hear the answers right, right from the horse's mouth. So um try to get as many people there on the line. I guess it'll be a Zoom call probably. Um try to get as many people on the call as possible and watching at home. Um just want to get as much information out to the people so they understand the process and how it all works. So.
That will be extremely well accepted.
Okay, um town administrators' report.
Uh I don't have anything on the agenda because, you know, what we were, when we were putting this agenda together, we, you know, dealing with the um COVID situation in the town hall and and around the town. Um I will say that, you know, today I got a um quick update um regarding the work that's happening on the hot road um with National Grid. It it does look like they are, they're making, you know, Nahat Road, the Nahat Road job seems to be moving uh right along. I know it's 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 most inconvenient, um you know, given where it's located. But um they seem to be moving quite along, right along, and um hopefully, they'll be uh finished with their uh main replacement um in the next week or so. And then after that, they will be getting to the service lines to the into, to the buildings off of Nahat Road. Um I know that we have uh gas work under another contractor um up at Howe Road. That one's taking a lot longer. Um and, you know, we're certainly keeping the pressure on National Grid to get that done as soon as possible. Uh the folks on Howe Road have been living with construction now uh with between our water main job, which um ultimately probably led to National Grid wanting to come in and um replace the gas main there too. Because, you know, when, once you start shifting the earth uh around underneath the ground there, it can cause problems to these older pipes. So when they knew we were in there, they wanted to get in there too and and change out the gas line. But there's a lot of ledge up there. And anyways, you know, it's 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 I, it's not moving as fast as we want, but we're we're certainly keeping the pressure on them and um hopefully, that job gets done soon as well.
Only just a quick question on that. Where's that start? Where's it going to end?
Which one?
The main.
Uh Nahat Road, it goes from Pond Street to Spring Road. So from um, you know, Captain's
Yeah.
all the way up to uh um, you know, Pond Street, right before the school, uh right before the church.
And will each street off of that have a tie-in?
No, but any, any um house that ties into that main, their service line, they'll get an, they'll get a new service line.
Okay.
When they put those, the house service lines in, is that a second digging up of the street or is that already, how does that work?
That, that's a second digging up of the street, but it won't uh it won't cause as much of a traffic shutdown as the main. There'll be more, you could still drive, they'll probably, we'll probably have details there where people can drive down the hot road um one lane, you know, at a time uh instead of shutting the entire road down.
Tony, I got a question on that. Um so this is a high-pressure gas main they're putting in. Uh and then the services to the households will be high-pressure, right? Um so does that mean that they have to take the meters from, if you have a meter inside your house to outside your house?
No, I don't, I don't know.
Okay, I think, I think it might. Um unless they've already done it. But uh with the new high-pressure, I don't think you can have the meter inside your house anymore. And I'm just letting the residents know that you have to be very careful about where they put the meter on the outside of your house. Uh because they're going to put it in the most convenient place unless you instruct them otherwise. Um so make sure if you're, if the gas company is proposing to take the meter from inside of your house and put it outside your house, that you have some say on where that goes.
I know that, I know from my past professional life, um National Grid was pushing for, you know, upgrades to um smart meters. But I don't know if that was just on the electrical side or also on the gas side. Uh so, you know, they may upgrade the meters anyways, um since they're upgrading the service line. Um I don't know if it means coming in outside uh from inside to outside, but I can check on that.
Yeah, check on. I mean, I just mentioning it through experience. I came home one day and found I had a new meter right in front of my uh picture window uh of my house, and I had to follow back and say, it's not going there. Um um so, uh okay, great. Do you have anything, Tony, Tony, um uh under your report, um I forgot to mention it, but I met with you and um Zach um Kayla the other day down at uh Lowlands to discuss some of the plans that you two are uh uh putting together for the flooding at Flash Road and Lower Castle Road. And I was encouraged with what I saw and the work that you guys have been doing on that. And I know that we've told the people down at Flash Road and uh, excuse me, on Fox Hill Road and um Lower Castle that we would engage them. So I think um we need to do that at some point. To let them know what we're thinking, what our engineers are thinking, um perhaps get some of their input in it. Um but like a lot of them said, this is not just a local problem, it's a town-wide problem, and we probably should discuss it uh at one of our um open meetings also.
Definitely. Um I wanted to make sure that what we were thinking about was feasible, um which it certainly seems like it is. Um and we got to put some final touches on it, but um essentially, for those on the call, what we're, what we're looking to do here is um create a emergency um access to uh you know, flood removal when we do have flood-like situations um that will, you know, keep our equipment um elevated and out of the vulnerable area of the flood, but also access a low point in that area and allow us to um discharge that floodwater uh back into the ocean without having to shut down the hot road or Castle Road. Um you know, we have the portable pumps in place now, but unfortunately, um you know, we don't really have an ideal spot in the Lowlands area of Fox Hill, Ward Road, and Castle. Um as far as uh accessing a low spot to pump from and then uh discharging without having to shut down a road. Uh so um we're, we're definitely making progress uh on that. And yeah, I think that we should probably have a uh maybe like a neighborhood meeting or invite the neighborhood um group to join a Board of Select meeting in the near future.
Yeah, that's, I mean, I'm really personally very excited about that, that option to finally uh help out that neighborhood.
I uh I also wanted to mention that our um that real estate and personal property bills um had, were mailed out this week. Um and so they are a bit, they are, if you haven't received them, you'll be receiving them soon. And they are due Friday, December eighteenth.
Right.
Um I just got a text from our, going back to the gas question, uh from Jim Devero, works for the gas company. He said that the meters can still be inside, although National Grid wants them to be on, on the outside. Hopefully, I got that right. But they can, they can still be inside.
Local knowledge is very helpful.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else, Tony?
Uh, that's all. Thank you.
Justice forum?
Hey, just before you do that, uh one thing, I I received a phone call today from Mehdi. Everybody in town knows Mehdi, and he said that uh he's apparently offering up twenty-five hundred turkeys to those that are in need, along with a plentiful quantity of pies. And so he said, if you would make that announcement, if people know somebody that needs a turkey or in need of a turkey or a pie, to let him know. I think the only way to get in touch with him would be on Facebook. But uh that's a, that's a tremendous giving.
Yes, it is.
Yeah, maybe.
Thank you, Mehdi.
Maybe we could um Maybe we could, I don't know how we coordinate that somehow, Tony, but maybe Linda Peterson could help with it.
Yeah.
Not just the elderly, but there's others that.
If I, if I know, if I know Mehdi well enough, I, I think I do, he's probably already reached out to her. So, but she, you know, let me think. I can try to, I'll ask her. I know that they talk once in a while, so I'll ask her.
That 2,500 isn't just Nahat, but he said. In that case, I would have said, I'll take one.
Okay, thanks, Gene. Thanks for putting it through. Okay, Citizens Forum, we have anything in the chat room, Tony? Anybody want to say anything?
Let me, let me allow participants to unmute themselves.
There's a couple that are, didn't get read when Debbie was announcing her retirement. Maybe you want to start with them.
Yes. Yep. Okay, so Kathy Famulari. I would, wrote in the chat, I would like to add my congratulations to Deb. And I could never have served as treasurer without her help. She taught me so much. Michelle Capano wrote, best wishes, Debbie Waters, on your retirements, you will be missed. Ken Corangelo? You are unmuted?
I think so. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, so I put these questions in the chat also. But one, so Ken Corangelo, 81 Willow Road. Following up Mark's mentioning the consultant doing the financial analysis for the eminent domain proposal. Where is the funding coming from for that?
Tony?
Where is the funding coming from for the consultant that Mark mentioned doing the financial analysis at East Point? So that's the, that is, it's coming through the, the, it's either, it's one or two things. It's either coming out of professional services, out of the Board of Selectmen's budget, or it's coming out of the donation fund from the Hot Preservation Trust. I'd have to double-check.
Tony, and let me suggest a third alternative. Seeing that the request was by the finance committee, it could come out of the reserve fund also.
Absolutely, yeah, absolutely.
So the funding hasn't yet actually been established? Is that, is that a fair statement?
I think that's what you're hearing.
It's one of the three. I'm not fully, I'm not 100% certain. I'd have to check with accounting if we, I don't even know if we've gotten a bill yet. So.
Was there?
I'll have to check with accounting on it.
Did it any sense as to what the estimate was or what the bill might be for this?
No.
I think it was, I do think, Tony, the proposal, the RFP was, I think it was 12,000, if I'm not mistaken.
Somewhere in that ballpark.
Yeah.
Well, we, we and you eagerly await the report. Um, just wanted to follow up from the last selectmen's meeting on November 5th. And then I followed up via email as Tony requested. I'd asked for an accounting of the gifts from the Hot Preservation Trust since the gift letter, since the timeframe when the gift letter was amended to allow for gifts that were not individually disclosed. I know you're busy, Tony, but I haven't, it's been a couple of weeks, haven't seen anything on that. Was just wondering if there is any timeframe when we could expect that.
Did you, did you send that in through the clerk, like through a FOIA request? Or did, or was that just from that meeting?
It was an email to you, I believe Diane and Mark was on it as well.
Yeah, Tony, I don't, I don't think we need a FOIA request on that. It's simply have the town accountant give K P a, I managed to get that account, that's fine.
No, I wasn't pushing it through that avenue. I was just thinking where to check first.
It's Gmail. It's literally, it was right after the last meeting ended, I sent, I sent the email.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. And just in that same vein, the Conservation Commission yesterday met and again continued the matters that they had in front of them for Northeastern regarding East Point. Kristen mentioned a change in the regulation or the guidance from the state regarding COVID and that they, they, there was now a 21-day limit after, I think, December 1st, when things had to be acted on. Does the Board of Selectmen have any position on the CONCOM's continuation and sort of continuing continuations? They had expressed not, not having any kind of public meeting for that. And just your thoughts on how the recent COVID guidance may change how that works?
Yeah, I'll let Tony fill in the details here. But we have, we are aware of those changes from the state. We've asked town council to take a look at that and to advise us. He hasn't gone back to us yet, but Tony, you might want to fill over the gap here.
Chapter 53 of the Acts of 2020 were signed by the, signed by the legislature. Essentially allowed for municipalities to toll permitting processes that, you know, would require or tend to draw a large amount of people. And thus, you know, with the pandemic and the limits on how many people you could have in a meeting, you know, when this went into place, it was, it was early on before, I think municipalities really got into the Zooms and the Teams and the Google Teams and things like that. So it basically, what it had said was, anything that would otherwise draw a large crowd, you don't have to act upon until 45 days after the public emergency is lifted. Now, last week or so, the legislature passed a supplemental budget and as an outside section, they amended that chapter 53 of the Acts of 2020, which basically said, you can't, you know, that they eliminated the 45 days after the emergency is lifted and said December 1st. So anything that's, anything that came in after March 1st and hasn't gone through, you know, any day of your typical regulated process or timing, you have to pick that up December 1st. And I believe what Kristen probably was saying was, the CONCOM, by rule, you know, typical, they have 21 days to acknowledge or open an NOI. So because it came in, because the original, because both of Northeastern's NOIs came in after March 1st, they haven't even done one day of it yet. So it's been continued. So as of December 1st, they'll have to, I believe, act on that. And they have 21 days from December 1st to schedule a meeting to officially initiate the opening or acknowledgement of the NOI. I think the next step on the process of that process is for them to hire a consultant to review the NOI. And then, then there's a timeframe, there's no, there's kind of no regulated timeframe by which, between when they open it to when they have to close and make a determination on it. But once that review process is over, there is a timeframe from that date to when they have to formally make a determination. So, long story short, the CONCOM is going to have to, you know, and, and our permitting, all of our, all permitting bodies can no longer toll these applications until 45 days after the emergency is lifted. And, you know, but speaking with town council, KP Law, who's, you know, involved with a lot of things at the state legislature, it seemed like there's a lot of, a lot of the pressure for that change came from housing development projects, controversial 40Bs and things like that. So I think the legislature kind of is saying, all right, you know, it's, it's been a few months now. You should have, you know, figured out how to do your process online at this point. So, you know, get going on it. So I think that's, that's, that's where we are. So we're just asking KP Law to formalize, take a look at our regs, take a look at the rules and the timeframe and let us know, let CONCOM know when they need to act next.
Is there any reason the town can't support a public Zoom meeting that might have a couple of hundred people?
No, I don't, I think we, I think unless, you know, our account isn't set up for that, I think we can, I think we could do it. Obviously, you know, we have, I think that, you know, with our community, a lot of, a lot of elderly and, you know, I've definitely experienced the, the comment from many people in town about how hard it is to participate through Zoom. That's, you know, one of the reasons why we're live on the local TV channel tonight and going forward. So, you know, the idea is, especially something like Northeastern, you know, no matter what side you're on, I think it's, it's, it's a big issue that affects a lot of people. So you want to make sure, you know, it's the same reason why our town meeting, you know, was minimized to the most essential articles. Because an issue like that, you know, is so important to so many people in town. You want to get as many people involved as possible.
Okay, except the town, the reason that wasn't done virtually for town meeting was because statewide doesn't allow for an open town meeting to be held virtually, right? But there's no reason a public meeting that's not the town meeting can't legally be held virtually.
Correct, correct, correct. Obviously, you just, you still want to get as many people involved as possible.
Understood. And I would just say, in many ways, Zoom actually makes it easier to access public meetings. For, if you look at the attendance of things like the CONCOM or even this meeting, since it's been on Zoom, you've had a lot more people on it and participating than you normally would having, you know, sitting in front of you at town hall. So just something to consider. It's, it's actually a positive in some ways.
Yeah, definitely. Now we got the best of both worlds.
Mm-hmm. Okay. And just on the gift letter thing, I'll resend the email that I sent two weeks ago, just so it's at the top of your inbox?
I just found it. I just, well, you know, I searched for it and moved it to the top, so.
Okay.
As soon as I sign off here, I'll send it over to accounting and get that put together for you.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Anything else, Tony?
Uh, no, nothing else on the, nothing else on the chat. If there's anybody else in the, in the meeting that wants to unmute themselves and participate, they're welcome to do so.
Okay, if we don't have anybody else, let me just say before we adjourn, Thanksgiving is coming up next week. I hope everybody can do the best they can under the circumstances. Be safe, try to follow the guidelines. I know it's going to be difficult. It's one of those, it's one of those holidays where you really want to be together with your family and friends. But it might be difficult this year. And so just be safe and enjoy it the best you can. All right, so I have a motion to adjourn.
Motion for adjournment.
Motion's been made.
Seconded.
Seconded. All those in favor?
Josh Andrew my.
Dean Candy, aye.
Mark Cohen, aye. Thanks, everybody.
Thanks, guys.